Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Jeffrey Godenas. I'm a representative from the office of Senator Jerry Hill. And I'm really pleased to be here on his behalf. Senator Hill was sworn into office on December 3rd. And we've been busy working. Obviously, we have big shoes to fill. As of the last election, Senator Sumitian obviously was turned out and has now moved on. We've taken over his district office, taken over in the sense we've moved into his district office in Palo Alto. And we are available for, obviously, to assist any of the council members or any member of the public. So of course, feel free to contact me myself. Teresa has my contact information. But the Senator wanted to make sure he expressed his thanks to the outgoing council members and the new council member. Congratulations. And to the Mayor and the Vice Mayor. And best wishes in the next year and looking forward to working with you. Thank you very much for having me.
Jeffrey, thank you. Just a clarification. The offices at Town and Country Village?
Correct. For the time being.
For the time being.
Yes, for the time being, our office is located in the Town and Country Village. But as probably most people know, it's busy this time of year with Christmas shopping, so it's a little difficult to get there.
It's that by the village she sounds right.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Hi, everything. Thank you, Mayor. I am here just to introduce myself. My name is Jennifer Stewart. I'm with PG&E. And as you may or may not know, Jim Cogan, who used to represent PG&E Government Relations Team for San Mateo County, he's moved on to Menlo Park to be their Economic Development Manager. So I am actually going to take over for him. I've been with PG&E, the Government Relations Team, for three years this month, focusing on a lot of different areas of the Bay Area of gas and electric projects. So it won't be official until after January, but I plan to reach out to all of you and make sure you have my contact info. I had the opportunity to meet Teresa and George and Steve at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, which was nice. So I'm just really looking forward to working with you and getting to know the town of Atherton. And I'll be reaching out to you and making sure you have all my info.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Do we have any other public comments? Any other member of the public would like to say anything? Okay, we'll close public comment period. And is there a report out of closed session? We didn't want to have closed session. There's no report out of closed session. So the next item on the agenda is Proposed Reconsideration of Salary and Benefits Resolution for Unrepresented Staff.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we reconsider the council's approval at a member meeting with the MOU for the unrepresented staff.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion from council members?
Uh-uh. I will after public comments.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Okay, I think you're up.
I think Malcolm, Dr. Watson, make a public comment.
Did you? Malcolm, do you want to make a public comment on this?
I'll make a brief.
Since you've been pointed out, you've been called into service. Make a brief.
Well, first of all, congratulations on your reelection and also election to be the mayor. Congratulations. And Jerry, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And Jerry, to you. And to all of you. Very happy, merry holiday season. This issue, to me, is one of the most important that the town ever faces, how we deal with our important part of our family, our employees. And I think you have an opportunity now to, I hopefully will rescind this, not just change it, do it what I think is the right way. And you'll have your normal budget hearings, which are public hearings. The New Year starts July the 1st. And in six months, the amount of money involved is very little to the town. And yet, I think it sends a very important message to our employees. You know, the, our testimony that we just received, it was great. It introduced our new people to the community, our city manager, Chief of Police, Finance Director. And the message each of those people had, the reason they came to this town was because it is special and the professionalism that we have and the people we have, the staff, it isn't because of bricks and borders, it's not because of beautiful town in the mall that brought them here. And I think that we have an opportunity to really put that as our major focus. And I would hope you would rescind that and move forward in a way I think is going to be very beneficial to the town. Thank you.
Council comments?
I have a comment. As a council, we have discussed these changes to the employee compensation for many months. We listened to the employees and their representative and augmented the compensation as a result of these meetings. It is surprising to me that after all this discussion and approval by all council members, that unlike the public review, the two council members have not changed their mind. In the last two years, we have made substantial improvements to the efficiency of the town administration, not only in cost reductions, but in putting in place normal business practices that have been ignored for years. Most of our expenses are in employee salary and benefits and contract labor. Nearly 80% of our expenses are there. Our residents, in approval of the parcel tax, expect us to use their money wisely. We're the stewards of the town's finances. The careful study, hard work, and difficult decisions by the council and staff over the last two years shows that we are fulfilling that stewardship. I hope the new council will not reverse these decisions. We have many good employees, and it's important to pay them fairly. Their present salary and benefits, even with the proposed changes, are far better than people with equivalent qualifications can earn in the private sector. It is widely recognized that if pension and health benefits are included, our employees are likely to be making up to double the private sector compensation. Defined benefit plans and lifetime health benefits in the private sector are like dinosaurs, gone. The present proposal, even with the approved changes, is generous. Many towns are teetering on the brink of bankruptcy because they have been comparing employee compensation with other towns rather than the private sector, which has a continuing ratchet effect. I believe our job is to make sure that all of our expenses are appropriate and that frugality is not forgotten.
Do we have any other council comments?
I'll go with the question.
So the motion that's on the floor is a motion to reconsider the salary and benefits resolution for the unrepresented staff that was passed last month in the November meeting. There's a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, and the motion passes. So we are now allowed to discuss the resolution that we have in front of us. We cannot make any modifications to it. It is the only thing that we can do, as I understand it, is discuss the resolution we have in front of us. Are there any technical questions that the council has for the staff? No?
Well, let me make sure it's clear. This motion has not been rescinded.
No.
It is now back before you, as if it were all new, a month ago.
Okay.
So this is like the matter was just called at that meeting.
Okay.
So the options are exactly the same as it would have been at that meeting.
I see.
You can vote yes or no.
Mm-hmm.
You can amend it as you see fit, or you can continue it to a date certain down the line, if that is what you would like. Rescinding it makes no sense because now you're reconsidering it as if it would never happen. So the way you would rescind it would be to say, vote no on it or vote yes on it. Either way, it would rescind what was done last time and would make it as if it were done tonight by your vote. Or you can continue it if you need more time to look at it. It's totally your call.
Could I raise a question to the city attorney then? City Attorney, there are some questions in my mind that have risen in terms of a couple of policy areas as well as the implementation. So you're saying that the only way that we could address or talk about that sort of thing would be to vote no on the motion?
No. Let me, I'll read this, a quick statement out of my little handbook here. If the motion to reconsider passes, and it did, then the original matter is back before the body. And a new original motion is in order. After you debate and discuss, you can vote in favor of it, you can vote against it. Last time, the city council voted in favor of the mode of the package of benefits that were before you. You can say yes, you can say no, you can amend it and say yes, or you can continue it for further deliberation and discussion.
Okay.
Further direction.
Further direction.
Yes.
Any other council questions?
Obviously, since I wasn't here last time, and I haven't been privy to a lot of things that have occurred, I would like to have an opportunity to do some research on this with the town manager as well as the finance director as well. So in order for me to do that, I obviously would be in favor of extending this so that I could get some time to get up to speed.
To continuing it.
Continuing.
Any other?
Madam Chair. I would incur with that, that we should continue this. I have some questions in terms of the couple of policy areas, one regarding the furlough and the other being the proposed bonus method to soften the impact of the changes we're making in policies. So I think that after we've had the discussion, public comments and so forth, that I would be in favor of going in that direction and directing the city manager to report back to us in January with a new, with the changes in the MOU.
So what I think I'm hearing, council, notwithstanding Councilmember Dobbie's opinion, because I think that at this point, what we're wanting to do is to call for a motion to rescind the resolution as it is and direct staff to come back to council in January with a new resolution for discussion, taking into consideration some overriding policy positions. And I think that council is agreed, in agreement with a lot of these, that I'm going to reiterate, that pension dollars have to be transferred from the town to the employees in the total of 7%. How that is handled, how that is structured, how that is implemented, but that's a policy decision I think that all of us on council are in agreement with. And that we are going to eliminate future retiree health benefits to zero, that we need to establish caps on medical and sick leave and vacation approvals, which I think is part of it. But how they are implemented, how they are structured, I think needs to have some work on it. Implement a tiered pension plan for new hires and formulate a 125 plan for medical benefit caps. The, I think the, the way that this resolution that's in front of us read, it was, there are other ways, you will, to skin the cap, to get to the same goal post. And we'd like to direct staff to work with, direct the city manager and staff to work through that a little bit more. Is that reasonable?
Pretty close. Actually, technically, your vote earlier rescinded the last resolution.
Oh, okay.
That was, the reconsideration means that never happened.
It was rescinded? Okay.
So it's like you're starting over again.
Okay.
And just like last meeting, all the options are still on the table. If you want to continue, you can do so without taking public comment because there's nothing to comment on yet, if you're going to send it back to staff to look at and revamp.
Then we take public comment.
Unless you wanted to take public comment, you don't have to. But then you can send it back to staff. I think the staff has direction and city manager can work with appropriate staff to try and put something together that maybe meets your, meets your direction. It would be helpful if anybody has any specific suggestions or areas other than Mayor, that is helpful, to pass those on to the city manager so that he can better respond.
Any other comments?
Are you to take public comments or?
Yeah. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this at this time?
Yeah, I'm Bob Polito. I'm on the Finance Committee.
Yes.
And I'm new to this. But I reviewed this whole process at great length, I wrote a letter to the council members. However, I've got to agree with Mr. Dobbie in that I think it would be foolhardy to start from scratch. Few people have spent months on this, and as you have stated, Elizabeth, I think that the core needs, there's concurrence on that. And I'd be very surprised if our new council member had great heartburn over that because it's been well thought out. I think the key things here, I think the furlough, quite frankly, I think is ridiculous. But the, the amount of time to bring these changes on, I think is extremely harsh. 18 months, I think is ridiculous. I think a timeframe of maybe five years might even be appropriate. But I would have to agree with Mr. Dobbie that to start from scratch would be, I think, insanity. My only question is, there seemed to be some issue about January at one. Is there some very, very significant cost that the city is going to incur if whatever we enact is enacted in January as opposed to today?
Yes and no. As you recall, the state legislature adopted pension reform, and it will get confusing with respect, it could get confusing with respect to new hires if you weren't in the process of adopting this resolution, meaning you've continued it to a date certain for clarification, rewarding, significant changes. But it needs to be on the table. If it makes it to the table for the first time in the future, CalPERS has already said there's certain, certain things will happen. And since this is the only group that doesn't have an MOU, the state legislature apparently presumed that every employee in a local agency is covered by some kind of MOU. And that's all they refer to, is they say, the MOU, if it's in place, then it continues until it expires. Problem is, these are unrepresented employees, they have no MOU. So it's my belief that what they were talking about, MOU is just a contract between the city and the employees. If we are working on the provisions of that contract on January 1st, it may be that those, some of those provisions or all those provisions can carry forward. That's why the January 1st date is referred to as being somewhat important.
And I could add something to that, Madam Mayor. The AB 340 requires those tiered pension plans, and that's what the city attorney is mentioning.
Right.
And those apply to newly hired employees after January 1st, as CalPERS defines them. So that's the only issue.
But wouldn't that take into effect anyway, regardless of whether or not we implement this January 1st or whatever?
It also applies to any new salary structures for existing employees. That's the problem. Because it does, it would, it could apply if, for instance, if the council takes up for the first time in February, were to take up this issue, then the employees would already be paying their own 7%, these employees would be paying their own 7% while the other employees, police employees, would not. And it would make Lieutenant and the Chief paying their own 7% while the rank and file police employees were not paying theirs. So there's a dichotomy there that's, you know, it's a fairness issue that's up to the council to decide. But if you go forward tonight by continuing it, it's my belief that you've started that process and under way existing California law, that essentially it refer, it relates back to the time when you first started this process. So there's, because there's a constitutional provision that says you can't pay somebody for work that you've already paid them for, you can't pay them more. And the courts have already looked at that and said, oh yeah, you can go back to the time when you were negotiating the new agreement, and those provisions relate back. So for instance, even if you've continued this from time to time to get more information, it will still go back to November as the date when this was first put on the table and you started negotiating with these employees. Technically, even though you, as, as Councilmember Dobbie said, you've been, you've been negotiating with these employees for months and months.
No, then, I understand that. But I think, but what we've got right now, in all due respect, City Attorney, is the fact that what is on the table is a reconsideration of the existing resolution. And I think that, well, I'd like to call for a motion to direct staff to bring us back in January, a revised resolution, taking into consideration some of the discussions that we've heard from the public and figuring out other ways to achieve our overriding policy goals that we agree to, that we are in agreement with, but in a, in a more reasonable implementation fashion.
Can you close public comment?
I, yeah, no, I haven't. Is there anyone else who'd like to have public comments on this before we close it? I kind of got sidetracked here. Okay, I'll close public comments on this and bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city manager be directed to come back in January with amended MOU for unrepresented employees that reconsideres implementing the furlough and bonus plan, provides for fairer means of implementing the policy changes for employees, and still achieves the goal of bringing the town's compensation system more in line with public sector comp plans, and reflects the trend of what is happening in the public sector, including the recent state level changes for pensions.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second.
For clarification, Madam Mayor, can we change the word MOU in there to resolution?
To resolution, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sure that's what you meant. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Three to one. Okay. So moving on, we have item number eight, which is the city manager's report. City manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have the written report. I just wanted to highlight a few items within the administrative section. The Stormwater Committee, we've submitted Gordon Seibert as the staffer, consulting engineer to InterWest, who will serve as the staff representative on that new Stormwater Committee from CK. The SBWMA is putting together a blue ribbon task force to consider changes to the governance structure. And in January, when the council considers appointments of council members to its various commissions or committees liaisons, that will be one of the ones that will be on the list. You have in this a report, for the first time, a full, detailed work in progress for goals and priorities list that lists all the things that staff is working on that are beyond their normal day-to-day functions. It's quite an exhaustive list, if you have a chance to go through that. It's going to be continuously updated by staff, providing timelines for the various different items within the report. I'm going to be talking to four different consultants to get some requests for qualifications for the council's goals team-building session to be facilitated sometime in February. And in January, we're going to bring back a small budget amendment request to provide some additional funding for the videotaping of council meetings so we make sure we have some set priorities so we can get all the meetings in that we want to videotape so we can put them online. That's the administrative section. Highlights I wanted to point out, well, in addition, also in January, Nicolai Consulting, who is doing the OPEB benefits, other post-employment benefit act, where our study is going to have a refresh of that data, that came over the finance securities meeting, that's going to come back in January as well, with some additional information, and a request to do a sensitivity analysis of both the OPEB benefits and the CalPERS retirement pension side fund obligation that the town has. We have $702,000 in obligation for local miscellaneous employees, the town has paid off its public safety side fund, so they're going to do a refresh of that data as well, with a request to council for a budget amendment to do that. And the expectation is we'll have both of those in line with the budget cycle, so April-May timeframe to come back with that data. And happy to answer any questions. The staff's here to answer any questions the council might have on this report.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yes, I'd like to add a couple of questions. One of the important things, I think, in terms of the Memphis representative and the self-debtor's management situation, where the mayor and the city is forming a group to look at the governance issue, is that there be a close communication tied back to the council on many of the policy issues. In the past, we, I think, had kind of a gap between what was happening at some of these regional committees and the council, council's knowledge of the policy kinds of things that were going to be discussed ahead of time so that we could provide inputs or maybe even correction on those items. So, thank you for, and police department, police report, they're breaking out these school incidents and showing the separation of traffic and other incidents, which is an area that I've focused on a couple of times, so I think that gives a lot better clarity as to what kind of activity that you're having to respond to. Look forward to the update of the financial information on long-term liabilities. I think that's a really important step to get a process going by which the long-range financial plan can be updated periodically to help us in our decision-making, particularly when you have a ability to show a sensitivity analysis, a range of options. So if CalPERS lowers their present discount rate from seven and a half percent to something lower, we'll have a rough idea already as to what impact that may have on the town. Project list, that's an excellent start. I think that the, I've sent you a couple of memos regarding the flooding concerns that these two residents in town have brought to my attention, John Rosariel and Aubries. And I'd like to continue working with you and with your staff and follow some on that. On the quad gate objective, how about adding holdout station, we moved into holdout station situation from our. And finally, the, in the library area, I'm hoping that the, your audit of the Joint Powers, Library, Joint Powers Authority, that the audit we talked about, we've been talking about for some time, can be, can take place in a shorter timeframe than six months. I'm hoping that you can get that done at least by the first quarter, but even sooner. And the donor fund question, I think, is something as far as the long-term ownership for that and where it should reside as far as on whose books. I think that's something certainly in six months or no more than a year, we ought to get that all resolved. So thank you for your efforts. I think it was a good report.
Any other council member who would make a comment on that?
No.
Okay. I met with city manager on it in detail, went over every item. It's really a good tool to use, and I'm hoping that we will have this in our packet every month going forward and have updated, updates from all staff on it, because I know that some of that's not. The, I will tag on to the flooding issue that Vice Mayor Carlson mentioned. Of course, the last storm we had was a, you know, a monster of a storm, but we were out, you know, slogging through, you know, waist-high water practically up and around our town, our neighborhood. And we seem to have a real problem with the Sacred Heart Bio- And we seem to have a real problem with the Sacred Heart bioswale along Emily. So, I'd like to bring that to Public Works Director's attention. And also the crosswalk that we approved at Menlo College or Menlo School, we allowed them to put along Emily, crossing Emily at the game. It now is a crosswalk to nowhere because it goes directly into the bioswale. So, we can, we need to take a look at that. But I, I think this is an excellent report. Thank you.
Can I make a?
Sure.
John Roggero also asked me tonight, as he's ill, he couldn't be here, to tell the council that he has spent over $2,000 recovering from the flooding in his house as a result of the last storm. He also believes that the reason for this flooding is that we have continuously raised the level of the streets so that the streets are now higher than the surrounding and therefore the water all flows into the individual properties. So, I, I was going to wait till we discussed that later, but it's being discussed right now. I do think it's something that we need to address because I know that there are at least two other, two people who have had their houses flooded and that it's very, very expensive.
If I can, before taking your comments, I just want to, in talking to councilmember Carlson about Mr. Roggero's and I think Aubrey's situation, I wonder if there could be a hotline, a phone number that our residents might be able to call in these situations? Like, I think that Mr. Aubrey was having to go out in a sandbag and he's getting older and unable to do that. I mean, is there a way that the town can help some of our residents who are elderly or unable to, to barricade from the floods, if you will? If that's something we can look into?
We can certainly look into that. We, we provide an opportunity for residents to come get sandbags or have gardeners or some of their staff come get sandbags here at the town hall and do that. That's accessible.
All right. Gary, do you have any comments?
I would like to say, I don't have anything to compare this to, but the town manager's report was very informative and so I, I do appreciate it. I will have to wait on giving you thoughts and input, but it seemed to be very, it's very helpful to me to get the level of detail that you've taken the time to do it. So, thank you.
Okay. So, are there any public comments on the city manager's report? Moving on, the community, there's no community organizational roundtable report. We'll go to the consent calendar, items 10 through 15. This is a time that if anyone feels that they want to pull an item for clarification or for further discussion, now's the time to do that, items 10 through 15. Is there anyone at the council who'd like to pull an item? Any member of the public? If not, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 10 through 15.
So moved.
Second?
Substitution and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass as unanimously. We'll go into the public hearings. And item number 16 is an appointment to fill a vacancy on the transportation committee. Do we have a?
No public hearings, this will be the regular agenda.
Oh, sorry. There are no public hearings. Sorry. Just somewhere over there. So, this is the regular agenda now, is item number 16, appointment to fill the vacancy on the transportation committee. We have a report by the city clerk.
Yes, you have a vacancy that arose on the transportation committee. In order to fill it, you have to vote on the two applicants who have applied for vacancies. Okay. I'll pass out the ballots.
So, did you want?
Well, I, I had a question, a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Are either of these candidates currently holding the office on any of the other committees?
No, they didn't.
I'd like to ask if any of the applicants are here. Gary Louder, is Sandy K here? Would you like to make a statement of why you might want to be on the transportation committee?
Sure.
I've read your application.
Thanks. Transportation has been a subject that I've taken an interest in all my life and gotten somewhat involved in advocacy in the past few years. And I feel that Atherton has a number of opportunities to materially improve its flow, particularly during rush hours, using various techniques such as roundabouts. And my hope is to help not only with that, but whenever other issues arise, if I can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for being willing to serve.
Thanks.
Okay, so, have we all marked our ballots?
Yes. Aye.
We have a tie. Of course, with four business in the council, you know, what are you going to say?
So, let's, let's just continue this until January, we'll have a full council. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So, sorry about that. Okay, so, item number 17 is informational update on the rating and drainage criteria. And the report is going to be from our community services director, Mike Cashwacki.
Good evening, Mayor, and all the members of the city council. The town's current rating and drainage criteria was adopted in 2007. And due to new regulatory storm permit requirements, it now needs to be updated. In addition to the update required by the stormwater permit, the proposed new standards also incorporate requirements for non-residential developments, which are, which were not addressed with the current standards. And this is important to let you know, there are five non-residential developments here in the world. The Sacred Heart School, the Menlo School, Menlo College, the Cal Water Facility, and the Service Club. Several months ago, through a competitive process, BKF engineers were selected to perform the engineering work and analysis necessary for this project. As we, as we began this update, one of the major comments we received from the development stakeholders was a current requirement to provide onsite storage necessary to retain two inches of rainfall from all constructed impervious surfaces, which was in some cases, according to them, it added excessive and unnecessary project costs. While the new proposed standards preserves the important requirement of new development not increasing downstream runoff in town of Atherton, our proposed standards do provide more flexibility and options for properties to satisfy this requirement. The proposed standards is a product of a very collaborative process between the town, BKF-